I'd like to call it to order the February 10, 2022, regular meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission. Ed, can I have a roll call?
Mr. Mills will not be here. Mr. Sluppus will not be here. Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Cartiffillis.
Here.
Ms. Corble.
Here.
Mr. Magrino will not be here tonight. Or he might be late.
He may.
In regards to the minutes from the January 13, 2022, regular meeting, any changes or comments from the commission?
No.
Do we want to make a motion that we accept those minutes?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any reports and correspondence?
None.
Any site plans, subdivisions filed for review?
None, none.
Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Any audience comments on items not on the agenda this evening?
Just real quick. I just realized this because I didn't see on the front lines. I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. No problem.
It was a different name on the agenda. This is what's on here.
Any changes to the, any old business that you need to go through?
No.
All right, moving to new business. Item A, Planning Commission Recommendation on the Janus Subdivision Final Plan, 593 Just About Road. Do you want to say, do you want me to say it?
No, I was wrong. I thought it was on this one right here, this one. So I do not have to recuse myself. I'm okay, actually. I'm good. Never mind.
Okay, we're on the Janus plan? Robin Janus, owner of a 2.8 acre property located at 593 Just About Road, is seeking township approval to subdivide and create one new lot. Proposed Janus plan creates one new lot on the left side of the lot, a property looking at it from Just About Road. The existing Janus residence will remain on Lot 2, which is 1.8 acres. The new lot in the blue on the screen is the Lot 1, and it will be a one acre lot. This is in the Peters Township Low Density Zoning District, and the minimum lot size in this district is a half acre. So both the new lot and the Janus existing lot and residence on Lot 2 will meet the LD zoning district minimum lot size requirement. Just About Road is a state road, and there's a 30 mile per hour speed limit on this section of Just About. So whenever anyone's creating a new lot, we always look at the site distance. We had our township traffic engineer, Mike Mudry with TPD Inc., go out in the field and look at where this new lot is being proposed. And he determined that there's more than adequate safe site distance for a new driveway to connect to Just About Road. Because it is a state road, they do require a PennDOT Highway Occupancy Permit, and that is a condition on this plan that prior to us issuing a building permit for a new house on Lot 1, they will need a PennDOT Highway Occupancy Permit. This area of Peters is in the Peters Township Sanitary Authority Service area. It's in the Brush Run watershed. The sewage from this new house would be heading to the Brush Run Sewage Treatment Plant. As you can see, running across the back middle part of the property is an existing sanitary sewer line. So the new lot will have direct access to a public sewer. Because we are creating a new lot, DEP Planning Module Exemption Approval is required, and that paperwork is in process. Lot 1 will have access to all other utilities, power, gas, water, cable, et cetera. So it's a simple one lot subdivision that Mrs. Janus is requesting that we approve. The township staff's recommending, we recommend to council that we approve the Janus plan, subject to the eight conditions listed in my memo to you dated February 3, 2022. And those are kind of cleaning up the subdivision. There's no major conditions there.
Ed, explain the 15% lot coverage number eight to us for at least a minute.
Any, in our low-density zoning district, there's a lot coverage requirement. So you can only cover 15% of your lot with structure.
That's not including?
Doesn't include sidewalks.
Driveways, sidewalks. It's just?
Enclosed.
The house, detached garage shed, 15.
That's true, sheds included, isn't that 15%?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And has there, to your knowledge, is there any time that they've not approved an HOP for a state road in our township?
There probably has been a few, but it's mainly site distance if it's.
And our guidance says it's good.
Yes. The only reason PennDOT would deny it would be for site distance. That's why we checked it.
So for note five, that the two bushes on the left side of the existing gravel driveway, I would just recommend you add that and with that, that nothing may be planted or put there, you know, to, that would impact site distance in the future. And then I would say the same with number six, that if the fence on Lot 1 has to be removed, just another condition that nothing may be put there, you know, in its place or.
Is that a site distance? Does number six do the site distance also?
Number five is. The fence, you see, Seth, can you point? Mrs. Janus currently has her fence going on to the new lot, so that has to be taken off.
Oh, so that has nothing to do with site distance there? Oh, okay, okay. So then I would only, then I withdraw that. I would just say for number five, we would just want that those trees have to be removed and nothing put in its place.
And I talked to Mrs. Janus about those bushes. She knows they have to come out.
Okay.
So let me be clear, Rochelle, are you saying condition, note, or condition number five in my report should be on the subdivision plan?
Yeah, on this recommendation that, yeah, that, and then on the subdivision, nothing can be planted there or put there that would obscure the site distance because then that would impact Mr. Mudry's opinion, I would assume.
Yes, it would, yes, it would.
But need to be feet stipulated off the property line where that can't happen? Or just print it there? I mean, it seems kind of ambiguous, you know? How many feet are you allowed to plant a bush?
Well, I would hope that, you know, folks would not plant bushes, trees in a location that would restrict their site distance as they pull in and out of their driveway.
Yeah, we hope that with all these rules. It's why we have rules.
And, you know, I talked to her about it. They're not big bushes, and it's not going to be an issue. But I understand what you're saying, Rochelle. We should make sure it doesn't happen in the future. And Robin had a conflict tonight, and she couldn't make it. And I said, I don't think you need to be here.
Anything else? Any audience comments on this one? And a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. The commission recommends that Janus subdivision with the, is it eight? Recommendations from the planning staff, and including the modification that the commission made.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item B, Planning Commission Recommendation, Crehan Five Holdings LLC cul-de-sac link modification, Five Farm Lane.
I'm recusing myself from that. I'm involved with that.
Thanks, Ed. Hayon Properties, on behalf of Crehan Five Holdings LLC, the owners of the property in question, are seeking township approval, both a recommendation from Planning Commission, ultimately an approval from council for a modification to the maximum length of the cul-de-sac to construct a 901-foot cul-de-sac as an extension of the existing Five Farm Lane cul-de-sac. The subdivision lane development ordinance here in Peters Township, specifically Section 385, 37, limits the maximum length of a cul-de-sac to 600 feet. This is for any new developments, for any, you know, small cul-de-sac like this. It's all limited to 600 feet. Any extension beyond that requires a modification from the subdivision and lane development ordinance. And really, that's intent to be in place to facilitate, you know, emergency services.
I have a question.
Time out.
Is that speaker for decoration? I can't hear.
Hold on, sir.
We can't hear you.
You can't hear you.
Hey, Rod.
I can't hear anything.
Hold on a minute. Can you come in and check these, please? We have a.
We have an audiovisual guy that'll come in.
They don't seem to be working. They do not seem to be working.
He's checking them. Can you speak louder for?
I'll do the best I can. This is a proposed modification for the township subdivision and land development ordinance, which typically restricts cul-de-sacs to a total of 600 feet in length. As I mentioned, the applicant is requesting a modification to construct a 900-foot, 901-foot cul-de-sac as an extension of the existing Five Farm Lane. Showing the screen, the existing Five Farm Lane is a cul-de-sac of 360 and a half feet long with a proposed extension into the property at 100 Five Farm Lane an additional 540.8 feet for a total of 901.3 feet. You know, typically, our subdivision land development ordinance limits this cul-de-sac to 600 feet in length to not prohibit the efficient use of emergency services, tract collection, vehicular circulation, those types of things. And we do generally try to promote interconnection of our street networks as much as we can and as much as feasibly possible. This property does present some unique challenges in connecting to either adjacent roadways, whether it be Thompsonville or East McMurray Road off to the east. I do not have contours shown on the map here, but as you climb towards this creek off to the east, there's a pretty significant drop in grade and then a pretty significant climb back up to East McMurray. And there's not a lot of space there to work on a potential roadway extension over to East McMurray. And there's some adjacent properties off to the east that would be prohibited as well. In terms of coming back to Thompsonville Road, the only real option would be acquiring the neighboring property and removing a house and then doing a roadway connection back to Thompsonville. I mean, I guess in theory it could be done, but I think staff understands that that would probably be financially prohibitive. You'd be building a single loaded road. You might not even be able to get lots on either side of it. And we really would just be having a loop road that's a couple hundred feet from one another. It doesn't quite make too much sense. So in this case, after consulting with the township engineer, like I said, you know, although we generally do try to promote interconnectivity of our streets as much as we can, we do see this as a circumstance where a cul-de-sac that exceeds 600 feet in length could be appropriate, especially considering it servicing four additional houses. We're not expecting a large traffic demand off this cul-de-sac or a large need for emergency services or trash pickup. So we certainly do think it's something that could be well accommodated. So that being said, staff is recommending that the requested modification be approved, subject to the single condition in my report regarding the Peters Township Fire Department approving the proposed subdivision plan, which will likely require the installation of a new fire hydrant just to cover a gap in water service. This would ultimately have to go back, go to council for a modification approval, then back to Planning Commission for a final subdivision plan, and then back to council for final subdivision plan approval. So if this modification is approved, it's not the last time you'll see this plan.
Seth, is there a reason why you have four houses identified on here? Or four additional? Is that what that is?
Yeah, so these red squares here are just, you know, potential locations of the four additional houses. There's green lines here that demarcate the four lots that would be created as part of the subdivision plan. Five lots total, but one has an existing house on it. So four new lots, four new houses.
So that's the anticipated subdivision plan, those four additional lots? Is there anything that would prohibit the developer to come in and ask for more than four lots?
I mean, not inherently known. If you wanted to place a condition of modification plan approval, we certainly could do that. I mean, that's all we've seen up to this point, is those four lots. And I think that's what's appropriate. I'm not sure if we want to.
I think it'd be appropriate for, as part of the modification recommendation to council, if you want to limit it to no more than four additional lots, that could be a recommendation to council.
I think that's a good idea.
Because otherwise, I mean, once you get the modification, then they could just go within the, with the terms of the, of the plan, and they could put as many houses as they want, and they would be, it would be a permitted use, right?
Yeah, technically speaking, this is conservation residential overlay. So in theory, they could come in with much smaller than two acre lots is what they're showing here. So if you wanted to put that, that four lot condition on the modification recommendation, that would, that would be appropriate. And that would be four new lots, five total.
Can we raise a question?
Time out. There'll be time for that.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a good idea. That was the initial thought that I had, too, is that this looks nice, but there's nothing preventing them from more or less houses.
That's a point well taken.
Any other commissioner?
With the, and I guess the developer would have to bring back sewer and water and everything back, back there as well?
Yeah. This would all be built to township specification. It would be dedicated as a public street in the future, extension of utilities, all the things that come with construction of a roadway.
So things like the width of the road, that's all predetermined?
Yeah. And we would, we would run, we would go through that as part of the final subdivision plan process. This is just to secure the potential modification.
The extension?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what is the smallest lot size of the four additional ones that are on there? I just can't see the one on the far left.
Of the four shown, the smallest one is this one here, just under two acres. 1.9, 1.89.
Okay.
Real quickly, Seth, show the four lots.
Yeah, so the first one in off Five Farm Lane, just under two and a half acres in size. The next one is the one I mentioned at 1.89 acres. Coming around the cul-de-sac, you've got 3.3 acres and then another 2.35 acre parcel. So definitely some larger estate-style lots.
And that first lot is two, the one that's not in the.
2.27 acres with an existing house on it.
And just the way that those are laid out right now, and I know this is generally speaking, because you haven't, wait, we're not to that point. Would, the way those are all laid out right now, would they meet other, like setback and, and coverage and things like that? Or they would meet all those requirements?
So if they don't, they're not going to be using the CR overlay, so they'll be using underlying low-density residential requirements, 50-foot front yard setbacks, 15 sides. I don't see any issue with what they're proposing here in terms of house location, because these are significantly larger than half acre lots, so they've got plenty of space to work with for house location.
Unless it's gigantic, right?
Right. Right.
So the only other question that I have then is, so the, the issue with extending this, again, is fire issues like that, that if this would, if there would be a blockage or thing like this, there's only one way in and one way out of here, right? And that's the issue.
Yeah.
So what is, what is the emergency plan if, for whatever reason, you know, a tree comes, I don't know, something happens and you can't get back?
I'd have to lean on our emergency services to answer that question. I mean, you, you clear the obstruction as quick as you possibly can or at least get it to one side of the road. But that is a concern that we take into consideration with any potential cul-de-sac, especially when we're seeing, like, new conceptual residential developments that show isolated entrances. That presents an issue for us, and that's something we try to address. But we shared this with our fire department, and they were acceptable to it with just the inclusion of a new fire hydrant.
You talked a little bit about the topography of the land, providing challenges if you were looking for another way onto this property.
Yeah.
Does that, topography of the land, of the, of the property of the land cause any concerns with respect to access for emergency vehicles for any reason?
This property in itself, it's relatively easy to access. I mean, there's an existing entrance off Thompsonville, Five Farm Lane. It's a public road. You can get in and out, no problem. What I'm, what I was trying to highlight was, you know, if we were to look at this in terms of trying to do a cul-de-sac connection off the existing Five Farm and connect it back over East McMurray, which is off to the right side of the screen, this stream here presents a serious topographical challenge in terms of getting down and then back up. And there's also properties here that are severely challenged for topographical reasons. So that just isn't a very feasible connection to make. And then, again, back to Thompsonville, it's a very slim piece of property here with a house that would ultimately have to be removed if you were to try to make a connection back down to Thompsonville. So really, the only, the feasible development of this property, at least in staff's opinion, is the extension of the cul-de-sac, and what they've shown us is reasonable.
And I saw a development on the, on the north. I don't know if it was which way is north, right there?
Yeah.
And is an extension there is not, is not more feasible than, than this one?
Yeah.
Because of the stream?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's houses there, and there's.
Right.
Commissioner?
Not right now.
All right, audience comments. I think we have had one. If you have a comment, come to the mic and introduce yourself to the folks on TV.
Does that mic work? Sorry, I'll talk about.
Hi, I'm Eric Micketts. We're, I'm representing the owners on Five Farm Lane. On the left there, we got the Micketts families, Todd and Tony. I do like the concern of not exceeding the density of, what is it? Four new units. I like that. That's a great concern. I don't think the extended cul-de-sac length is going to really impact this because of the low density. Two concerns. If you could go to the other slide with the larger overview. The original plan of lots did intend for the road to go straight as, as it's proposed, but we always intended, you know, as much as you want to develop over here, you know, we thought over here would also be a potential development for these two owners, and we already subdivided one, but there could be another one here. I guess I would ask for the limit of four to possibly be five, so we would have the option to still develop that left side with a similar-sized lot in the future.
And where would that, where would that go?
Well, we already got this guy subdivided.
Right.
So we certainly, well, actually, we would want one there.
Well, that's, that's, that's not within this.
Yeah, but it's still on the same cul-de-sac if it gets extended.
It's an existing lot, though.
But it doesn't count. It wouldn't count, right?
I was going to say, that lot, I believe, is outside of the subdivision.
But it's, it's existing.
It's on the, yeah, it's on the existing.
It's not within this new extension.
Okay, as long as we don't, as long as we continue to develop this, that would be great. And I would always anticipate one more here. So if I wanted to say of the. Go back to the other slide. The other, yeah, so, so we have three, four new units. Our lot we already subdivided would be here. That would be a fifth and a potential sixth.
Go back to the other slide, Seth. I'm not seeing a viable lot between those two houses, Aaron.
Well, the intent was for the road to extend on the original plan of lots. The road went all the way to the existing right of way with gasoline. This driveway would have turned down to that new road in the future plan of lots, and then this lot here would have been tied into the road as well.
I guess I'm just lost. So I know you're talking about what would have been, but I'm kind of looking at what we have now. So right now, we have the cul-de-sac, and then we have a road going back to the one property there, right?
The driveway.
Right?
Yeah, that's the driveway.
So the driveway would go away?
Yeah, it would have to. It would probably just come, break down into the new road about here.
If we put another lot in there, is what you're saying?
Well, the new lot could almost use that driveway possibly. It's, you know, it wasn't planned, but it was intent for the future.
So I think, I think what Aaron's trying to show is that this cul-de-sac would extend to about here and kind of, you know, meander, end up here. This driveway would then tie in here, leaving a lot here for a potential house.
Yeah, we have exactly the same.
But then why don't we see, why don't we see exactly that? You're not representing, you're representing the client?
We did the original plan of lots. This new plan of lots will amend what we did originally. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. This is conceptual. It's a very conceptual sign you have, and I'm okay with it. We just didn't want to lock ourselves out of what we always thought would be.
We might, we might tie that lot in.
Okay, so I see. You're, you're not representing the applicant.
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I think, I think we're crossing, we're crossing two different things here.
I think your concern is that.
Limiting it to four restricts his ability to tie an additional lot in.
Which is our original intent on the original plan of lots.
We're limiting it to four from the property that is currently being subdivided. They could come back in and ask to tie into that.
I think if.
We need to act this way there, or right away, to tie those sorts in.
I think if we should, if your, if Planning Commission's comfortable, we should go no more than five lots now.
That gives, that secures the ability for that lot to.
To reach that cul-de-sac.
I should have gone first. I do have unconditional comments.
Okay, you could come on up, just sort of introduce yourself. I know you were here earlier. Not everybody watches meetings on TV.
All right, Sean Crean, I represent the filing for, for the cul-de-sac extension. And, you know, I have no problem at all with what they want to do from my standpoint. I just want to get on the table that this is the plan, but we're working with site folks. And so I was going to ask, if there's going to be a restriction on the cul-de-sac, I don't think it's unreasonable to add another one, right? And so I would ask that as we get final on this, to have the capability for five on, on this stated property. And in addition, I do agree with Aaron's point and would support them having the capability through this mechanism to add to that. And now, obviously, that's based on the fire department and everybody agreeing, but it seems reasonable in, from the standpoint, that the density is so low. If you were to put a 600-foot cul-de-sac anywhere in the township with a half an acre lot, you'd have three times, five times the number of homes to service. So the likelihood of any of those needs and the ways around, you know, those needs seem like they would be, you know, incidental in this case compared to a 600-foot cul-de-sac with half acre lots, so.
Right, but I guess just devil's advocate on that. The point is that's why we don't have 900 feet cul-de-sacs, because we don't want that issue.
I understand, but we're, we're agreeing. I'm agreeing to that, but, you know, you don't have two and a half acre lots in all the, the plans either, and I'm willing to, you know.
We agree that, we're, we're not disputing the length of the cul-de-sac.
Oh, I know you're.
No, we understand.
So I think.
Hey, Eric, Eric.
You're going to have to come and speak if you're going to come up with this. I can hear, you know? Trust me. You wouldn't be surprised to have many people saying.
No, this is good.
I saw you on TV.
Does this work?
What would you say, good?
No, we, we agree with the extension not affecting, you know, us as residents, and the low density should not affect, you know, municipal, other municipal reasons for safety. But that wasn't what I was, that wasn't what we were opposing. What I was opposing was just losing our ability to develop like we originally intended with one more lot.
Sean, you're, you're saying five, maybe six would be okay, but are you saying within, on my map, the green line or outside of that?
No, within the green line, I'm just asking for one more than stated. This is the plan, and to your point, we, we still have site work and considerations. I just, I didn't expect to be locked in. Given the, the size of the lots, I didn't expect that it would be an issue if there's one more. I didn't think that would be the topic of conversation, given that they're all such large lots. So I just wouldn't want to be locked in. We have no plan for that at this moment. We're working with the site workers. At the end of the day, if we ended up with five, I wouldn't want to have to come back and, you know, shift things up. That's what I'm asking for. That's what I'm asking for. And in addition, I would want to support Aaron's, you know, request to get access to the road as well. So that's what I'm asking.
So it's six?
So it's five. Five on the green property and one easement access to an additional new property accessing the cul-de-sac.
I drafted just a draft condition here. No more than six new additional lots be created with direct access to the proposed cul-de-sac.
The extension of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure, just for legal, for clear on this. So the one that is already subdivided...
This one on the top.
I would just want to make sure that we just, you add there, including the, you know, previously subdivided, or something, just so somebody would come back and say like, well, no, that didn't count. The one that was, because that one's already subdivided, right?
We should say new lots.
Are you talking about the 13-acre lot at the, or a different one?
At the front, where they said that part is already subdivided, so that counts as one. And I get what's being asked here, but everything's all in the language later on.
I wasn't planning on counting that one as one.
That doesn't count.
So on the screen, I'm highlighting the one that Aaron referenced.
Mm-hmm.
That's existing.
Right.
It's subdivided, it's ready for potential development.
Correct.
We would be carving off this one. I would not even consider this one a new lot because it's an existing house, in the frame of what we're talking about. So we got...
Can you go back to, yeah?
Yeah, that's easy.
And so we'll have one, two, three, four, maybe another fifth one within here, and then an additional one over here for six total.
But would we call it six lots, though? Or would we call it like the five and then the easement to a six? Because if you just say six lots, then, I mean, if it were me, I'd come back later on and say, this says six lots. I get six lots in my area.
Then I could...
Because, I mean, we're only talking about, we're only talking about this property right now, and with all respect, we're not talking about your property from the same point of how many lots. We're talking about your ability to use that cul-de-sac, but you would have to come back and do the whole subdivision. So I don't want one that says six if what we're really talking about is five here. Because otherwise, if I were you, I'd come back and say like, no, it says I can do six here.
So six total, but one of those is stipulated to having, only having access from an easement from the adjacent property.
I don't know if you called a lot, though.
Could you call it six access points to the new extension?
Well, I think to Rochelle's point, then Sean could just come in with six lots.
Right.
I think you're making it a little too complicated. It's just simple, six new lots can have access to the extended Five Farm Lane cul-de-sac. He could, Aaron Mickett can do one, and Sean could potentially do five.
But then, isn't that though a race to whoever can get here first?
No.
Oh, you come first with six, and you're going to say I'm permitted of six?
I mean, it's not much to deal with. It's about the cul-de-sac extension, just to be clear. It's my only two cents. You know, the purpose of this meeting is the cul-de-sac extension.
Right.
And as Seth said, we're going to be back with the subdivision plan. And at that time, you can, you know, you can reinforce the cul-de-sac. I think the purpose of this, the cul-de-sac we're asking needs to support six new serviceable homes, right? And I think that's the cul-de-sac ask, right? Extend it, and it'll support up to the six new homes. And I think the subdivision ask, when we come back for subdivision, will be for these four, maybe five, and an allowance of an easement for the exist, you know, the other existing lot. You know, however you guys want to do it, but I'm just, I think they're two different things. One is, what can the cul-de-sac handle? Is it appropriate for us to extend a cul-de-sac in the township for this reason? And then the second one is, based on the subdivision plan, is it accommodating existing homeowners and the existing situation, and do we approve it? So just my two cents.
Right, I just want you to understand where I'm coming from here, though, is that if we don't look at the next step ahead, once you have that approval, you can come in and say like, you didn't say that I couldn't put quarter-acre lots, like acre lots on here.
I understand.
Because we'll have already surpassed that, right, to make that qualification.
Yeah, I do, I understand.
Seth, are you working on some language?
I mean, the only thing I haven't tried to craft up is restricting an additional lot via easement. I mean, I left my condition at six lots. I don't know, Rochelle, what are your, how do you...
Can you read it again to me?
Yeah. No more than six new additional lots be created with direct access to the proposed extended cul-de-sac.
Does that allow, though, for branching off of that, that additional? No, it won't? Okay. If you tell me that it won't, that language won't?
No, we're good.
Say it to me one more time?
No more than six new additional lots...
I have another question.
Okay, let me listen to what he has to say. Go ahead, Seth.
I'm not real clear on this, but I would like to know that we...
First of all, say your name and address.
I'm Tony Mickett, and I own the property to the left of that, and I developed Five Farm Lane so we could have the plan that we have here. Developed it through it. And what I would like to be clear of is that we're still able to develop. My son owns the property behind there, and he's considering putting another house to the left of this extension. Now, if he does...
Go to the other man.
He would put that house where am I here? Okay, he'd put the house in here. He'll take his driveway, then can his driveway tie to the drive back to the cul-de-sac, or they have to go all the way to the cul-de-sac? To the drive?
To the road, to the new cul-de-sac.
So is that, is that, we're understanding that? I'd still be able to use that property, tie it into this road somewhere, hopefully not at the cul-de-sac, that'd ruin your property. And I'd still like to be able to build the house on my lot on the left of Five Farm Lane, and I think you've agreed that's okay, because that's not even involved with this extension.
That's not part of this.
Let me clear. Thank you.
No, go ahead. Yeah, I'm just saying that that's not part of what I'm talking about, because that's over here. That has nothing to do with this.
Good, Seth, do you have a written...
No more than six new additional lots be created with direct access to the proposed extended cul-de-sac.
I think it's good, Seth.
I think that you have just a concern.
He's refused.
Oh, you refuse. Yeah, never mind, you can't say anything, never mind. Okay.
It says new lots.
Yep. New additional lots.
New lots to the extension.
Yep.
Does that language only reference the existing cul-de-sac and back? Is that how you wrote that?
No, it references the extension.
Yeah.
What's outlining why there? What's outlining why?
Just the extension.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, because this will be number seven. We're not talking about that.
We're not talking about that.
Okay, thanks.
Just the extension.
Just give me a second, because I don't want to have to know, but I'm not sure that I'm there yet.
It may be different if we were putting a senior care center at the end of this. We would be having a totally different discussion, but...
That's correct.
Even in towns, it's never going to be a multi-unit area.
I mean, six, two. Six. I'm just, I'm a verbiage person, so my concern is that when we're saying direct, direct access, I'm just thinking of branches. That's all I'm thinking of, is, you know, if we, what we're really saying is that we don't want any more than six houses built. And I'm just concerned when we're talking about new lots off of this direct, direct access off of this cul-de-sac, that then, it's like, I'm across the street from my house, I've got one driveway, people have one driveway, and then there's two houses off of that driveway that's right across from my house, right? So it's across my house, it's one driveway, and that driveway is branched off to two more houses. And I'm just trying to make sure that we're thinking this through, that when we use the language, because that's what anything comes back to, when we're talking about six new lots off of, you know, with direct access, if we have a two-plus-acre lot here, somebody could come back and say that they want to subdivide that two-acre lot and put a shared driveway. And my concern is that I just don't want to end up that we're back, you know, down the line, we're here, and you, each person wants to subdivide, the acre lot allowances are only, what, half-acre or whatever it is? People subdivide, and we've agreed to this extension where you have one access point for a 900-foot cul-de-sac that was, you know, is not outside of our current regulations. And now, we've got people asking for, you know, four lots per there, because we've allowed for branching off of the main cul-de-sac, right? I'm not saying that's your intent, Seth. I'm just saying, though, that when I walk this down the line, you know, where we are with that and what could potentially come down the line, and then they're at a permitted use, because we've already allowed this road in here. And if they come up here with a permitted use, we don't have a whole lot of wiggle.
Rochelle, I would say that, I think that restriction, when I say new additional lots with direct access, that would include lots with a shared driveway. So, you know, if, let's say Sean comes in with five new lots, not including the one on the left as you enter, not including the one at the existing house, so we've got five over here on the right instead of four. And then the Micketts come in and say, well, we want to do two flag lots that use a shared driveway. We would say no, because that is seven lots that are using direct access to that cul-de-sac extension. So that limits us to six total lots with any type of access to that cul-de-sac.
In addition to that...
Because you can't build, you have to split a lot to create a new house. You can't build two houses, right?
Right, they'd have to come to us with a proposed subdivision plan. At that point, we would catch it on the condition of the previous subdivision plan.
In addition to that, when, what is it, Crehan LLC comes in with their final plan, that five, let's say it's five, there'll be a note on there that none of those five lots in that plan can be further subdivided.
Okay.
Yep.
Period. Cannot be further subdivided.
You could do, yeah.
Okay.
So...
So is it six?
We had six, yes, we had six.
What's the condition?
No more than six new additional lots be created with direct access to the proposed extended cul-de-sac.
And we could, you know, as part of this modification, we would, like I said, we would carry that condition on to the final plan that comes in next.
Right.
There would be a note on the recorded plan.
Okay.
So that gives Crehan LLC the ability for five, and the Micketts can get one more additional lot, potentially.
Okay.
All right, lacking any help? Audience comments, come on up.
Another question, please.
Sure. Just state your name, your address, if you want.
My name is Lucy Shopp, and my husband, William. We live at 106 Pin Oak Court, which is right about...
There.
On the backside.
Yeah, on the backside. Hello, neighbor. And this may not be an appropriate time for this question, but we did want to bring it up, and if it is not an appropriate time, just please tell us, and we'll come back another time. Our concern is with drainage of the properties going down the hill, and the reason is, there are homes on Country Brook that have their stormwater drainage go right into the field. That comes down to our property. We've had significant erosion over time. And I think Tom has had, who's Tom? Tom's had significant erosion in his property as well. So we wanted to make sure that there was sufficient thought put into how the properties are going to be drained, how all those homes are going to be drained, so that we aren't flooded.
That is a point very well taken. As we get into the, you know, the land development process, moving into potentially the next planning commission and council, they'll have to put together a land development plan that shows full road construction details, stormwater details.
Okay.
And when each of these houses come in for a building permit, they're going to have to do their own stormwater management plans, and we're going to have to ensure that they're not negatively impacting any adjacent properties like yourselves or your neighbors. That's part of our land development review process. So that is, and that's something we're very concerned about with every new house and every development.
And we appreciate that.
And you'll have, oh, wait, it's all right.
Because that has happened, you know.
Oh, yeah.
And Country Brook is just, we walk up there, and you can just see the drains.
If they get their modification, and they come back to us with an actual subdivision plan, you'll get another letter from us.
Okay, good.
Come back and take a look at it. It's all part of the process.
That's what I was going to say, is you'll have another opportunity.
Yep, definitely.
If you got noticed this time, you would get noticed next time to come back and see.
And just real quickly, Seth, can you go to that aerial?
Yeah.
So you see that stream in the back?
Yes.
So these new lots have individual on-lot stormwater management facilities that will drain to that, discharge to that stream, which is, I'll say, below your property, so that water won't ever get, is that Pin Oak Court right there that I'm seeing? That water from these new lots will never get to you. It's downstream of you. It's down watershed from you. Do you understand?
Yes, but others have gotten to us. Other properties above us, above...
This property is below you. This property is below you.
No. These, the new part, the new plan?
See that stream right there, Lucy? Can you highlight it, Seth?
No, I can't do both.
Do you talk about this?
That stream right there.
Yep.
That will intercept any runoff coming off those lots and drain it to the right, and then head down toward Brush Run.
Away from your house.
Away.
Okay. I wonder why it doesn't now, for the houses that are like...
Because this is not Country Brook, Lucy. It's Five Farm. It's down watershed from you.
Off Thompsonville.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this will go back to the, I guess the fire department would hear it again with the six-house issue and make sure that they don't change their opinion.
Yeah, we'll keep them.
Okay.
Any other audience comments?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, come on up, sir. Introduce yourself.
I'm Lucy Shipp, and Bill Shipp has lived here for thirty, forty years.
What was I saying to the microphone? I know this.
Yes, yes. I just want to comment and give me, I'd like a little explanation of the diagram, just for my reference, so we know what to do. May I?
Sure.
What does this indicate?
The purple lines?
Yes. It goes all the way around.
What do the purple lines indicate? Is that what you're asking?
Storm sewer.
It's a storm sewer.
I think that's a sanitary sewer.
Sanitary or storm sewer?
And then we have this...
That's a, that's a stormwater facility.
Okay, and that doesn't exist now?
No.
No. Okay, if you go, go back up to the, okay. I believe our house is about in here. And the topography here is rather steep. You can see by the elevation lines here, compresses here, so this is steeper as you go this way. Not so steep here, steeper here. Now, the creek you're talking about, you can't see on this diagram. That's where most of the water runs, the rivers, which it does, only it doesn't show here, but it does, the houses above us on Country Brook, which interfere almost...
Go back to the aerial.
...a little lot from right down through here. Yeah, this is our house right here.
Okay.
And there is a creek here. This is not a creek, per se. This used to just be a little drainage ditch, as I say, without, that's why it's deep, due to erosion over the last twenty years, it's become wider and deeper, and every year it gets wider and deeper, comes closer and closer to our property. That's what we're concerned with in the future, because we're going to have load coming off of the new cul-de-sac street, there'll be storm drains there, there'll be storm drains for the new houses. So I think if you're counting on what you're calling a creek here, is not a good idea. It does run directly to this larger stream, I don't know if it has a name or not, but this goes out to Thompsonville Road eventually. And we have a lot of water come down this way. When you get more than an inch or an inch and a half of rain, this fills up completely almost. And in the past, we've had it, this overflow will come right down to our backyard here. So I think we've got to think over the stormwater or the drainage patterns in this area a little more thoroughly, considering the topography, have it nicely printed on the other diagram.
And we certainly will.
I was going to say, and this plan will come back a number of times.
This is flat up here, there's still one this way, and then there's really steep going down this way. And I don't know what is planned here, but that is a, is sort of a waste area right now, among some of the trees.
I completely understand what you're saying, I think tonight, we're just talking about the potential to extend the road.
I would encourage you to come back.
Yeah, they're going to come back with road construction details and stormwater details, and all of those issues will be fleshed out as we move further along in the process.
And what the developer will have to show is that even though we're saying, we just tried to put in kind of a maximum number so that we wouldn't come back with one with, you know, forty houses or whatever, so, but what the developer will have to do is have to demonstrate that this property can handle the up to the six, you know, up to the six new ones and not impact that, that's what, that'll be on their onus to demonstrate that.
Thank you for your attention.
Of course, of course.
Any other audience comments? I'm hearing none, I have a motion.
I'll give it a try, I'll make a motion that the planning commission recommends the modification to the Fire Farm Plan Number Five, adding a second stipulation that no more than six lots.
How does it read, Seth?
No more than six new additional lots be created with direct access to the proposed extended cul-de-sac.
And adding that.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to, I am, eight C new business, planning commission recommendation, the Greece, IRR grantor trust requests to re-subdivide on the private road to Clara Lane, and I will be recusing myself from this item.
Just take, we'll take a minute, it gives us time. Is that door getting closed?
Yeah.
It's getting closed. Just give it a second. Okay.
Okay, Seth, do you want to take us through this?
Yeah, the Greece IRR grantor trust is kind of a combination of a group of multiple property owners along Clara Lane, which is a private road in the township off of Irishtown Road Extension. It's also seeking modification approval from the township, similar situation, recommendation from planning commission, modification approval by council, to perform a re-subdivision along a private road without bringing the road construction up to township specifications. This proposed subdivision, or I guess re-subdivision, would take a number of lots and shift some lot lines, do some consolidation, ultimately resulting in a net zero increase in the number of lots on Clara Lane, and all of this is part of trying to divide up property amongst the heirs to the overall master property, which is a parcel of land that encompasses the green and the blue here, and then another portion down here, it's all of one large parcel of land, it's these two are joint, it's a joint parcel of land. The Township Subdivision Land Development Ordinance requires that any subdivision shall be serviced by both, by a public and private street, in that case, they should also conform to the design standards in the overall section, three, five, thirty-seven streets, which basically means if you're going to do a new subdivision and you're going to have a private road to service that subdivision, it's still going to be built to township specification. You know, we encounter this very, somewhat infrequently, but the intent there is so that, you know, you can't come in and do a new residential subdivision for any number of lots and build a road that is substandard and then presents issue for access or maintenance, and then ultimately, if you ever come back to the township and say, you know, we can't maintain this road anymore, we'd like you to accept maintenance of it, it's just not up to our standards to be able to maintain and adequately handle stormwater and those types of things. In this case, we're looking at, like I mentioned, a proposed subdivision plan or re-subdivision that does not result in the net increase of any, of the total number of lots. The parcel of land on both sides of the road here would be subdivided into three lots, the green, the blue, and the purple lot, Lot Two A, Lot Two C, and Lot Two D, as part of the proposed conceptual subdivision plan, and then the remaining of that lot would be consolidated with the existing property located at, I believe, 131 Clara Lane. So all of this in totality, as I mentioned, would not result in an increase in the number of lots, and I think that's what's key here, is that in the eyes of the planning department, this isn't really a subdivision where that section of the ordinance was meant to be utilized, we're not, you know, creating a certain number of lots that would need a publicly designed road, so it is the township planning department's opinion that, a recommendation that this modification be approved, subject to the two conditions listed in my staff report to the planning commission. I'm happy to answer your questions, I know we have multiple members of the family here that can answer any questions as well.
So I have a question again about the road, just catching up here, the road, before any, before any houses could be built, the road has to be built all the way through to township standards?
That's what we would typically do. In this case, it's not our intent to place a restriction on building on any of these lots. Lot Two, the red lot shown, has a house on it, Lot Two A, the purple lot, has a house on it, the only two that could potentially service a new house would be Lot Two C and Lot Two D, and, you know, if they were ever to come to us with a new subdivision plan, or they came back before they even got the modification with a different subdivision plan that increased the number of lots in any way, then our perspective on this would be much different, and that section of the ordinance might be applicable. But as it stands today, even if, you know, a house was built on Lot Two C or Lot Two D, we still don't, you know, say we think that that section is meant to require all of Clara Lane to be built to township specification.
Can I ask, what's the existing configuration now?
Yeah, on the back of the screen, and that's important as well, so as I mentioned, this lot here on the north side of Clara Lane is the same as this parcel here, this is, there's a Z across these two parcels of land, so this is one large lot situated on both sides of Clara Lane. This is an existing house, and then these two parcels of land are owned by the same owner of this house. One additional thing that I, would be a positive out of this proposed subdivision plan is, these two lots here, since they're not serviced by sanitary sewer, public sewer, are nonconforming in the sense that they're less than an acre in size, so if you're going to do a new lot or have a lot serviced by septic, you have to be at least one acre in size, gives you additional space for an additional septic system should the initial one fail. So with these three lots, plus a portion of this lot being consolidated into one another, we would be eliminating two nonconformities from the township zoning ordinance. With that in mind, we would also be, again, splitting off the southern half of Clara Lane property, consolidate with those three other properties, as I mentioned, doing a parcel around the house here, which is the purple parcel, and then two additional lots on the other side of Clara Lane.
But go back to the, right there, that's the existing lot configuration today.
So does, so is that under multiple owners, is that what, where that, all those lots are multiple owners, there's?
That's correct.
Two, three, four owners there?
But these three are the same owner.
Okay. And how many structures are on, how many residences are on all that property today?
Two, two houses, one here, one here.
And where's the existing road or lane that feeds that?
Clara Lane is situated in this private right-of-way that extends out to Irishtown.
Private road all the way?
Private road all the way.
What's the, what's the material of that road, what's the composition of that road?
Combination of dirt, gravel, I'm not sure if it's ever been paved or concreted in any section at any point in time, we can have the family speak to that, probably some will do, it'll be, it'll be fine.
And that road is not plowed or maintained by the township at all?
That is correct.
This part of the road is gravel.
Could you just come introduce yourself, up to the podium and talk to people on TV for a second?
Just so folks know who are talking.
Bernie Fisher, and I live on 117 Clara Lane. This part of the road from here out to Irishtown Road Extension, that's gravel, and then from here all the way down is asphalt.
Okay. I apologize, Bernie, I didn't remember.
There's a home here and a home here. And I can give you a little background of what's going on here.
Yeah, please.
This is, this is my mother-in-law's home down here, and two years ago, there was a fire at the house, destroyed the house, also my father-in-law perished in the fire. Since then, my mother-in-law has moved in with us, the house has been restored, and now my stepdaughter and her family now live in this house. They want to buy this house, but obviously, they can't afford buying the whole property from the estate, or once the estate is established. So that's why we want to section off about an acre with the house, so they can procure that house, and the rest of it, there are three siblings from my mother-in-law's, and we're planning ahead to subdivide the rest of the property into three parts, pretty much equal parts, that would be this part here, that would be attached to our property, my property here, and then these upper lots would be split into two, that would go into the other two siblings.
So, sounds good.
Is that playing a little better?
It does, yeah.
Now, I'll also say that, if you can see this over here, all this property here, all this, all this, it's all family property, as a matter of fact, this property over here was my wife's uncle's property, and he passed away last Thanksgiving, and we, we and the Chapmans have cured this property to keep it in the family, but now there's nobody living in the house, but we didn't want the property to go outside of the family, so we bought the property, and that's the idea here, we want to keep all this to family.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's helpful.
And there's, there's no issue with building homes on Two C and Two D without upgrading the road?
That's correct.
That's like, required by, it's allowed by the township?
That's what they're asking of the modifications.
Would potentially allow them to do, I don't think they have any immediate plans to build houses on those pieces of property, but in theory, that would be a possibility if the modification were approved.
And I'm just asking, and I know that's not what you're asking for right now, but when we talk about Lot Two D, and obviously, the flat, you know, that portion right there is intended to give like driveway access or whatever, so would that meet, could you do two driveways right there, and would that be allowable, or?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at it a little bit more detail when the final, when the actual subdivision plan comes forth, same as the last modification, they're going to have to come back to planning commission. It looks to be at least fifty feet in width, which is what is required, and, you know, if, I don't, you can't do more than one on a fifty-foot flagpole.
Right.
And if they were to ever come in and, you know, ship that lot line over and make it a hundred feet and try to do multiple flaglots, then we're increasing the number of lots there, and this conversation changes.
And the conversation changes, okay.
So right now, there's four lots total in this whole thing, what you showed before, that's just that those two are a lot smaller in the Lot Two area.
Correct, one, two, three, four.
Okay, got it.
One, two, three, four.
And there's no restriction with the length of that blue flaglot access depth, right?
That's correct, as long as it's fifty feet wide the entire length, and then you can get back big enough to meet all of our other setback requirements.
So.
And currently, all the residences that have, that are on there now have on-lot sewage? Septic?
We have septic sewage.
Yeah, septic, yeah.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, go ahead.
Come on, come on back up.
The house that's, let's see, up here, my stepson's house, they actually have sewer, they're tied into the sewer here, and the Chapmans are currently in the process of also tying into that sewer. I just want to make that clear, we're not all septic there.
Yeah, and I'm only talking about the stuff that's in color right now.
Yeah, this house, this house, and this house is all septic.
And, um, the next step, if, it has to go to council for a final decision on the modification to not require Clara Lane be brought up to township spec, when they get that from council, hopefully, then the next step would be to come back through for a final subdivision plan.
And that would still not require a township road?
Correct, that's what they're asking for the modification for.
How long is Clara Lane?
It's, it's, it's long.
Quarter mile, maybe.
Yeah.
What's the width of the paved portion?
About twelve feet, somewhere between, maybe.
So single lane?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
My other question is, for the, under the planning staff recommendations, for number one, where it says then street general standards or subdivision land development could come into effect, is there a reason why you just didn't have that read that creates any, any new lots, then property owners will be required to comply with Section 385? Is there a reason why you use the could come into effect language rather than are required to meet the requirements of?
Yeah, it's a good question, I think my thought process there was, I guess in theory, they could request an additional modification, but then that would make this condition moot.
Right.
So then it would just, yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good point, we'll change that, just say, change out would, could to would.
Could you read that sentence, Seth?
So this condition within state, if I'm correct with you, Rochelle, the modification approval only applies to a proposed subdivision, either as shown or revised, that results in no new additional lots being created. If the subdivision plan is revised, or if a future subdivision plan is proposed, that creates any new lots, then the section of this township subdivision land development ordinance that requires the road be brought up to township specification would come into effect, but this current configuration would not bring that requirement into play.
So it's saying if we ever subdivide any of the other properties, then?
That's what that would have, is to upgrade the road.
Or seek a, you know, seek a modification at that point, what we don't want to do is, let's say, I understand where you are right now, but you guys decide to sell and all new people come in or whatever, or you decide to add more, we just don't want to lose the chance that ten, fifteen years down the road, maybe that is so degraded by that point, somebody hasn't maintained it, we've lost the ability or the right to say, no, you need to meet these requirements going forward, just so that you're on the same footing as anybody else who's asking for subdivision or changes, you know, to their property that you guys, that you haven't leapt three steps forward, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, that would allow for this subdivision plan to proceed, and then once it's done, then you're back on the same playing field as everyone else, like Rochelle said.
I would just change could come into effect to will apply.
That's fine.
You know, that just simplifies the language, maybe, just meaning that that provision would apply to a new subdivision plan, and then if there's some reason you didn't want to, you wanted a modification, you would just ask for it, and then you would go through the same process.
I agree with that.
Is there anything in the covenants with these that has, calls out any maintenance of these roads, or what standard they are to be held at? I mean, right now, that dirt and gravel and paved single lane only supports two houses, and I understand that, you know, the property was in the opposite direction, now the lots are being enlarged to a size that could accommodate two new houses, and also a larger house on Lot Two, that would increase the traffic usage of those, of that lane, so that's my concern, is that, you know, to maintain access for safety or whatever other purpose there is to more houses there.
Yeah, I mean, being a private road, you know, we don't have those type of requirements for minimum maintenance of a private road, that's, I mean, that's why that section was crafted, to say what it does, because that's really our only opportunity to bring those up to requirement, but if somebody's just existing on a private road, and we don't have a minimum maintenance requirement for them, because they're private.
I think it all makes sense in the fact that there's no not, no new lots.
I tried to say that like, I tried to say it like four times.
Yeah, I know. Net zero. The commissioners have any more questions or comments? How about from planning staff?
All right, can I have anybody that would like to come up and make a comment regarding this, I don't think there's any negativity from this, from the, but you're welcome to come up and make comments.
If you agree, there's no comment.
That's the way I see it. Okay, well, having no audience comments and no more from the board, perhaps I can entertain a motion that we can actively act on.
Well, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Greece IRR grantor trust's February, Plan of Lots set forth in the February third, two thousand and twenty-two, modification of the Clara Lane resubdivision with the one modification, including all planning staff recommendations, with the one change that number one, the language we changed from could come into effect to will apply.
Got it.
Do I hear a second of that motion?
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This will now go on to council.
Okay. Maybe going to the planning portion, any miscellaneous issues?
Should have your annual report.
Did you get that?
Yeah. Very nice.
A lot of blood, sweat, tears in that, Seth.
Nice job.
At least, like, flip through.
I did earlier, actually, yeah.
There's good information in there.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
Thanks, thanks for coming out.
You'll get a ladder. I'll send you guys a ladder and we'll go from there.
Yeah, it's very nice.
That's all, Seth.
It's not, it's not all of it, but a lot of it.
All right.
I don't have any others.
All right. Okay, nothing else? Anything, Jared?